I'd like to bring the February 11th meeting of the Peters Township Planning Commission to order. Could I have a roll call, please?
Mr. Sinepis will not be here. Mr. Carpatillis?
Here.
Mr. Smith?
Here.
Mr. Lively?
Here.
Mr. Mills?
Here.
Mr. Corvill?
Here.
Mr. Brino will not be here tonight.
Okay, we have the minutes in our docket. Is there any discussion, changes, modifications, or can I have a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve the second.
Motion to second. Motion has been moved and seconded. All those in favor of approving?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion is approved. Any reports or correspondence we don't have?
If you've got your annual report in the doctor who's not going to recognize what you're saying for putting that together.
Great job.
Isn't that available in one line for anyone? Is that on line yet?
Yeah.
Yes, it is.
Excellent. You have a great job.
That's it.
Thank you. Site plan subdivisions filed for review tonight?
None.
And is the agenda approved as is?
Yes.
Are there any audience comments not relegated to the agenda tonight? Seeing none, and there isn't any old business, let's move on to new business. The first one being Planning Commission recommendation, Killen-Wilmot re-subdivision final plan, Peters Drive.
This is a re-subdivision. The two adjoining lot owners, the Killens and the Wilmots, purchased that property. It sits in between their properties. They jointly bought it together, and now they're splitting it and combining the property into their adjoining lots. This Wilmot-Kiln re-subdivision does not create any new lots. It's a simple re-subdivision of a lot 51 in the Clintock Acres plant lots that's unbuildable, so the two adjoining landowners bought it, and they're splitting that land up and combining with their properties. The Wilmot property, lot 50, becomes .73 acres. In the Killen lot, lot 52, becomes 1.56 acres. This area of Peters is zoned LD, low-density residential, with a minimum half-acre lot size requirement, and both these lots meet that. Staffs recommending we approve the Wilmot-Kiln re-subdivision plan, subject to those three conditions listed in my report.
Seems very straightforward. Any comments from the Commission? If there isn't any questions or anything from the audience?
I'll make a motion to recommend, to Planning Commission recommendation, for Ed Zieg's February 3rd, 2021 memo to approve.
Okay.
I'll second.
May he second. Any, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So moved. Second new business is the Planning Commission recommendation for the Schultzer subdivision plan number one, final plan, on 175 Pleasant View Drive.
This is another recommendation to Council. This is step one. The next step is Council approval. Eric and Becky Schultzer own 5.48 acres, lot 1201 in the Cross Gates Plan, number 12, subdivision plan that was recorded back in 1984. The property is located at 175 Pleasant View Drive. They're seeking approval to split that lot into two lots. The purpose of the subdivision is to create the second lot there, which is lot number 1201B. And that, the purpose of that subdivision is to create that lot so their son Owen can build a new house there. The existing lot, lot 1201A, becomes a 2.31 acre lot, and the lot that they're creating for their son, 1201B, becomes a 3.171 acre lot. This area of township is located in the right-of-way, in the area of Peters Township, in the water shed. There is access to public sewers for both. The existing lot is already on public sewer, and the new lot will have access to the public Simple subdivision here, creating two conforming lots. This area of Peters also is zoned low-density residential, half-acre minimum. There is a, it's a little unique access that, the Pleasant View Drive right-of-way goes all the way down. The asphalt driveway that you see to the existing lot is in a public right-of-way. This new lot, 1201B, will come off of that Pleasant View Drive right-of-way, using the existing right-of-way, which is there, and then they'll turn right into their lot. Staffs recommending we approve the Schultzer subdivision plan number one, subject to the six conditions listed in my report, due to February 3rd, 2021.
So the current driveway there now, which is on public right-of-way, the owners take care of that themselves?
They do.
And then later, when the house is built, the township will take care of that little?
We only take care of the intersection of Pleasant View and Sherborne. Our maintenance stops, even though we own that right-of-way, we don't have a public road in there.
Okay, so it's not built to standard, so you would take it over?
It is not. It's just a private driveway through that right-of-way. Both lots on a public right-of-way. You know, if it was more lots than two, then we'd, a little bit of a problem there, but because it's only two, there's adequate access. There'll be a shared driveway over that right-of-way for approximately 50, 60 feet. I wanted to point out that when lot 1201B comes in for a building permit, you know, they're going to have to submit to us a grading plan, stormwater management plan, they're going to be subject to the traffic impact fee, and it's a new lot, so therefore it is subject to the traffic.
Sure. Is that the increased traffic impact fee to 1525 now?
It is.
Yeah. When did that go affect, January 1st?
It went, in fact, late 2020.
Yeah, I thought, okay.
Probably 2020.
What was that bump, about 20 bucks?
25, I think.
20 bucks. It used to be 15.
Yes, that's on.
The reference to the DEP sewage facility planning module approvals pending, that's referenced, then, that taking care of the two and three of your staff recommendations?
Yes.
Okay.
And I have all that paperwork ready to go to send to DEP for the planning module.
So nothing will be approved until two and three are taken care of?
Yeah, it's correct. Nothing will be released for recording until we get the DEP planning module approved.
Does there have to be some kind of maintenance agreement for that piece of the road that's on public?
Technically, there should be some sort of private driveway maintenance agreement between the two property owners.
Probably go into the agreement of sale or something like that.
There should be something that, in case one of you sells someday, folks know what they're dealing with with a shared driveway. We can, do you mind if we make that a condition, that a shared driveway agreement be established between the two lots?
If that's necessary, sure.
You could add that.
Yeah, I think that's a good idea.
Good idea, Tony, I doubt.
Anybody else have any questions or comments?
No. So then, any motion?
Yeah, unless we need to hear from the applicant, I think we could entertain a motion.
So I'll make a motion to approve the Schwatzer?
Schwatzer.
Schwatzer subdivision plan number one, dated February 2nd, 2021, subject to the six conditions set forth by the planning staff recommendations, plus an additional recommendation that a shared driveway agreement be required prior to approval.
Prior to approval or to?
Prior to building.
Okay, prior to the building.
Okay. All right, we have an active motion. And seconded. Those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So moved. Thank you. New business item C, Planning Commission recommendation for the Alex site plan variance request on 4100 Washington Road.
Before you this evening is zoning hearing board case 997-2021, the Alex variance request at 4100 Washington Road. This will be going before the township planning, or township zoning hearing board on Tuesday, February 16th, so it's upcoming Tuesday, for their ultimate decision. I apologize, my number up there is incorrect, but the two variances in question in regards to this proposed site plan include a 31-foot variance to the maximum permitted front yard setback off of Washington Road, and a variance to allow for parking between the proposed new building on the site and Washington Road. There are some existing buildings on the site. This is a revised site plan. The existing buildings would come down. This would be effectively a brand-new construction. This property is zoned mixed-use, or mixed-use activity district. That district has a 20-foot minimum, 25-foot maximum front yard setback off of all right-ofways. Because the properties to the north and the south were developed to facilitate some cross-access, you can see here, the property to the south, a little stub for cross-access. You know, it's, we've gone through a number of iterations of a site plan. The main priority for the township was to preserve this cross-access through the front of the site, and for the applicant, it's a benefit. You know, they have their entrance off of Washington. They can do some direct access into this site here to the south. We're also proposing a direct access to the property in the north, off the back end of the site as well.
Can you close that door, John? Thank you.
Again, prioritizing the maintaining of that cross-access kind of required that building to be pushed about 50, 56 feet off of the existing right-of-way. If they placed it within the 20 to 25-foot maximum, they would have been approximately in this location, obviously not allowing for that cross-access, the building to be stuck right there in the middle. Because the building's being pushed further back off the right-of-way, eliminated any parking opportunities that would have been behind the building if it had been located further up, so that parking is then being shifted between the building and the right-of-way. Part of the district requirements for the mixed-use activity district kind of require that parking be placed between, or parking be placed behind or to the side of principal structures to facilitate the activation of roadways when the buildings are closer up to the right-of-way, more of a pedestrian center development. But again, with the focus here being on the preservation of that cross-access, all of these things really came into play to facilitate the development of this site. The applicant has provided some conceptual elevations of what this future building would look like. It looks very similar to the center to the south, that houses, the Sport Clips, the Barter House Bakery, and the Franco's Restaurant. Here's some existing pictures, or pictures of the existing site. You can see at the top, here's the existing principal building on the site. Here's the existing primary entrance off of Route 19. This picture off to the right, yes?
Seth, I'm confused. Where is this building going to go next to what?
So, this white building is gone.
Okay.
And?
You're asking where, Ken? Yeah, on the, it's confusing looking at this drawing and then this picture.
This right here.
I was trying to put it together.
The parking spaces and then show.
So this red circle of the parking spaces in front of the building, this is the building here.
And really, the front of the building is facing north, so that's the side of the building right there, right?
Correct, yeah. I mean, the primary access will be here along this side of the building here, because that's where the parking is located, but the building is still outside of that maximum front yard setback.
So that proposed building is going to sit where this current building is, the white building is?
It will be sitting, it will sit further back.
Okay, but in that thing, does it, okay, because that's what I was trying to put together, was confused with what the game plan was. It's starting to make more sense.
Good. No, it's quite all right. This is some pictures of the cross-access to both the north and south. It's a little bit off-screen here, but this is the southern property, the southern commercial center, again, that houses some of the other, the Sport Clips and the Barter House and Franco's. It's much cleaner of a cross-access between the two parcels. It's much more on-grade, much more of a level transition. This is the center to the north. In our initial iteration of the site plan, we intended for the cross-access to be straight across both sides, from the southern property through this property, then to the northern property. And when the property to the north was developed, which is this site plan over here on the left side of the screen, they reserved a potential area for future connections, but in our conversations with the attorney for the property to the north and the township solicitor, unfortunately, although that area was somewhat reserved, we're not able to force a connection to happen in that location. We've had some pushback from that property owner to the north, so.
You had a ramp, right? Like that elevation falls off, so.
I mean, you could make it work theoretically, but you know, in our initial conversations with that northern property, they pushed back on the connection point right there. They had some concerns, so that's why we've gone through a number of different site designs, and we've pushed that northern connection to the back end of the site. It's, this property, 4100 Washington Road, would be developing with a cross-access right up against the property line. Fortunately, it's not a direct access as it stands today, but if any site plan revisions were ever to happen to that property to the north, that would give us the opportunity to then force that connection. Because of this property doing so, and what our ordinances require as of today, that property to the north was developed under prior ordinances that did not require the interconnection. It was designed somewhat, but wasn't required at the time, where it was required when the property to the south was developed.
Are we able to require a curb cut on that back entrance for this property?
It will be, there will, it will be right up to the property line. It will be ready to go if anything happens on that center to the north, that we can facilitate that connection. If they ever have a revised site plan, that would give us the opportunity to force that connection.
Seth, is the, I see that, so we're surrounded by single-family dwellings, right?
Yeah, there's, I apologize, my report here at the bottom. It's surrounded by some commercial zoning. There is some residential off to the back. There's the Water's Edge townhouses off to the back end of the property. That was, they've always been in the loop in regards to, you know, what opportunities do they have in terms of pushing stormwater back there, sewer access, those types of things. But there were some initial design alternatives that included stormwater connection back to their area, but that's no longer an option, so they've always been in the loop, but we have some, you know, we're still working with.
So, yeah, so my question is, what impact does either variance have on the single-family dwellings?
I mean, in terms of the building location, it's still a significant distance away. It would be at least over 100 feet before you get to that nearest property.
Versus 131 feet, or, I mean, is it because it's a third?
Yeah, yeah, right. It would be, actually, you'd take 31 feet off that distance. I mean, you know, there's 60-plus feet until you get to the back of the property line, and then you have to, before you get to the actual nearest residence, probably another 30 or 40 feet, if not more than that, so.
Right, but I guess, I mean, if we're looking at 100 feet versus 131 feet, it cuts it by a good 25 percent.
Right, and in terms of visual perspective, these residences, it's a 20-foot-plus drop from the back of this site to the drive aisle for those townhouses in the back, so standing down there, you're not really going to be able to see the difference of that 30 feet just because of your site angle. I really don't think it would make that much of a difference. It's not like it's, they're level with one another, and that extra 30 feet makes that much more of a difference.
Is it going to have an impact on, like, noise or things like that, though?
You know, I wouldn't expect it, only because the, you know, this site is relatively constrained in terms of its overall size, in terms of getting a building and parking on here, and these types of uses would be very low-traffic generators, offices, insurance businesses, those types of things, and I wouldn't expect there to be a significant noise impact on either the commercial or residential properties around.
There's already two weeks.
Yeah, and there's two commercial centers right there.
Already operates.
So is the, the parking section of this, is this variance needed for them to comply with township parking requirements, or is this for convenience purposes?
Well, you know, in order to meet their minimum parking requirement, they need these parking spaces in the front. Because our ordinance says you cannot have parking between the building and the road, it's a variance of that subsection, so in order for them to meet their minimum parking standards, they need a variance to put parking between the building and the roadway.
And correct me if I'm wrong, but doesn't Starbucks and the Franco Center both have parking between the building and the road?
They do.
So it would almost look, it'll look very similar.
Right. Pushing this building back, it puts it relatively right in line with the other two centers. You don't have a building that's a lot more forward than the other two on the road.
Yeah.
So it does create more of a cohesive development pattern across all three sites.
Did the other sites get some sort of variance in order to build?
They were developed prior to those requirements for the parking being between the.
Yeah, it's important to say, this property was rezoned in 2017, and all the development, the zoning change and all the development rules changed in 2017.
Right. So I guess my question would be, then, is there a reason why when there was the rezoning done, and I would assume there was some anticipation that that property would eventually be developed so that that wasn't, I'm just concerned about the legal requirements for a variance, and the fact that if it's, you know, self-imposed, I mean, variant, and it's a 31-foot, I'm just concerned about them meeting the legal requirements for a variance, which are not, you know, I mean, that there has to be a.
I mean, I think ultimately, staff's going to come with the positive recommendation, which also came from Council. Council saw this on Monday night and made a recommendation that both variances be approved, with the consideration that, in this case in particular, we have conflicting zoning requirements. We have development requirements that require them to maintain cross-access to adjacent properties. We have park requirements that, you know, force them in a really tight spot in regards to minimum parking. So we have standards that are conflicting with one another in such a sense as effectively precluding the development of the site. I mean, you could not meet all of our standards at once and develop the site in any way, shape, or form, so I think we're going to come with, this is what we feel is the best alternative that we've seen, and we're going to make a positive recommendation.
And there are unique physical relationships that are not going to change the character of the neighborhood. I think it.
It's going to blend in with the centers to the north and south. It's not a, you know, heavy impact.
This is the minimum variance that they're, that they need to comply. I think that when we get to the zoning hearing board, we'll hit those five criteria harder.
You're saying, Eddie, the, you would not even be able to have a restaurant there, a sit-down restaurant? Not enough parking?
No, I'm curious to see what ultimately can go in there. It can't be anything that generates a lot of traffic and a lot of parking.
So the parking is based on the size of the building right now?
Parking's based on use and square footage inside of the space, so they're saying office, based on, the office and retail, based on the square footage of the building, yeah, it gets them to there.
So no one could build a restaurant there later?
No, you could not do tenant-out.
Restaurant-type parking.
Right.
Say that again, Seth?
Restaurant-type parking.
Yeah.
So that would preclude anybody coming in and asking for that?
Right, yeah, and that comes upon us to.
To stop it.
Yeah, whatever tenants come before us, we have to check against their.
Are there 11 spaces or 12?
12 parking spaces, correct me if I'm wrong, Rich. 12 parking spaces.
Who's here for the applicant?
We have the applicant and the applicant's consulting engineer.
Somebody come on up, maybe introduce yourself. I don't know if the commission has any questions for you, but you can at least give us a brief synopsis of the plan.
I'm just really enjoying myself. I'm John Alex. This property, my wife inherited it from her father, and we're approving.
John, he stuck up to a little closer place.
Just for the folks on TV, this is recorded.
Oh, okay, all right. Hi, Mom. So my wife inherited the property from her father several years ago. We've held it on, we've held on to it for all these years. We've rented it. So you can kind of see that buildings on the land are pretty rundown. I think it's kind of time to refresh the place. So, you know, we have two options. Option number one is kind of refurbish these. We do still get a lot of calls for rental. People want the property as it is, but in our view, I think we just think it's time to kind of start over, refresh the building, put it, you know, bring it to the current date, have it blend in, and just kind of be a beautiful addition to the area, so. We've been working with the planning, the planning commission here for several months. We've exhausted several options, but I think the plan we have now is a good one. You know, there's obviously some things we're working through here, but you know, I hope they just kind of see our vision here and give us a positive but.
Okay. Thanks, Mr. Alex. And you, sir?
I'm going to fill in the blank. Good engineer. My name's Rich Kaufman. I'm the engineer for Mr. Alex, Mr. Parkill. And as Mr. Alex had discussed, or that you have seen, the buildings that are there don't quite match the rest of the corridor, as far as what's there, as far as the business district, Lake Side Plaza. And to meet all the, all the requirements, as Seth had said, we can't meet them all with this site. We just can't meet them all. We, it would look a lot, this gives it a cohesive feel with the setbacks, and in fact, we're not asking for the same setbacks that the neighbors have. We're just moving back far enough that we can get the cross-access to go along with the overall planning, if you would, concept, and that you have, that you can come through. You see all the stores sitting back relatively in the same way. If you've seen somebody sitting right up against the road, we couldn't do that, because then we're not allowing for this cross-access.
So the proposed building is a one-story building, just has a facade that's higher? It's a one-story?
Yes, sir.
One-story?
Yes, sir.
All the way across, okay. For Seth, the fire, the fire department has looked at it, make sure that they've got enough room to get the, so that they're asking for enough variance?
You know, yeah, so when we, you know, we have to go through the variance process, we'll ultimately be coming back to planning commission if they do obtain their variances for site plan review. The fire department has been a key on this, but they're going to keep looking at it again.
Okay, I just want to make sure they have enough variance to get the trucks in.
I mean, their setbacks meet all of our general, you know, roadway width requirements, drive-out width requirements. I mean, they still have those in place with the setback.
Okay, because it looks tight.
Hey Seth, is there, just from a timing perspective, is there a reason why this is in front of both us and Council before there's a formal planning staff recommendation in place?
Yeah, so we give, we're required for all commercial variances to give planning commission an opportunity to provide a recommendation. Council likes to stay abreast of any variance applications, and if they choose to take some, they choose not to.
Sure.
This one in particular, we feel like the township had a vested interest in ensuring that this cross-access was maintained, so Council wanted to weigh in on it and provide a positive recommendation.
Oh, no, I'm sorry. I think you misunderstood my question. I'm asking, is there a reason why it's in front of us now before? I'm just, the last paragraph that says that you're still reviewing in the application, is there a reason still before, before you guys are ready to make a recommendation, one way or the other?
I wrote this a week ago. I was, you know, I finalize my report because we're getting hearing board after tonight, and that'll include having a recommendation, recommendation. I just wasn't sure if there's any other conditions or anything I wanted to put in place before I, before I wrote this report. We, in essence, we have our staff recommendation ready to go. I'm just going to go out to the zoning hearing board tomorrow.
Can I ask, is this building almost square? Because it looks like the sides in the front are the same, and so is it going to fit three different pieces in there?
The building is not.
Yeah.
Yes, sir. The building is not square.
Okay.
Thank you. 67 by 36, the sidewalk being six foot wide is one of the reasons why it kind of looks square.
Yeah, I'm looking at the elevations here to try to see, they look like they're the same size almost.
So you're anticipating the building to be fast with the parking lot?
This, for clarification, those were for the previous structure.
Okay.
Okay.
Which, before we went through and tried to get architectural drawings done again, that's the concept that we're essentially going with. However, if we, if there was a recommendation to do something different, having the architect give them over and over when this is still more so in the site plan pages.
Okay, that's fine. So these are, the, the typical concept of what the facade will look like is this, however, it's not to scale with the current building size that is in front of us.
Yes, sir.
Okay, that's, that's, thank you.
See, that's just my, my concern as well. I guess the drawing isn't depicted of what's going to actually be built. But to me, if the building's flush with the parking lot and somebody's trying to back out, there isn't even bumper room. So I just want to make sure that there's enough footage, enough variance to, to be able to use this property. And so even though that's the building, that doesn't mean that that's going to be the building. The building could be, is the sidewalk considered part of, if you, if you had to put a sidewalk on the side of the building which faces Washington Road?
Yeah.
Is that included in the build-out? I mean...
I mean, we're not requiring in this instance. If it was, it would have to be shown in here, and they'd have to push the building back an extra five feet to accommodate for that sidewalk.
Well, and just to be clear, I mean, their own, they're asking for the variance for the, just the setbacks and parking requirements. They could come back with, I mean, they could come back with anything, a totally different design, whatnot, because I mean, that's not what this variance is for. It just says that, that they don't have to buy by the same parameters that the rest of the code requires, right? So I mean, you guys could, you guys could come, conceivably come up with a new other idea, somebody else comes in. This is, this, it doesn't have to look like this, based upon what we're being asked to approve right now, right?
Yeah, I mean, right, right. We're looking at two design criteria for the overall site. Other elements could change. They just could not, you know, exceed the variances if they were, if they were...
It's clear, they're not asking for a variance on the number of spaces. You're asking on the location of the park. We're all clear on that, right?
Well, I just want to make sure that there's enough room. I guess...
No, I agree. I agree with David. It looks awfully tight.
Twenty-four foot drive aisle.
That aisle is twenty-four feet wide.
I know, but if, I mean, you know, without a sidewalk, when the car's backing up, we, we have our bumper that goes over the sidewalk usually. I just don't want to build this building out and then later having, you know, hitting the building or hitting, you know, another car. You want to make sure it's, you know, another couple, three feet.
This drive aisle, I mean, that's, that's wider than, you know, many of the new roads that we have built in subdivisions.
But I guess what David's saying is, you're saying fifty-six feet back is what this is general?
Round it up, yeah.
Yeah.
Still make sure it's enough.
Fifty-five point nine?
Yes.
Do you need to go back a little further?
If we went back any, it would be, we'd try to keep it minimal. If we wanted to place something in there for, if your concern is protection of the building, well, I just want to make sure. Put something there for protection of the building so that you wouldn't have an issue. And something that wouldn't be averse to the sighting of it, if you...
The aesthetic.
Yes. So that you wouldn't look at it, oh my. So that's what it would be. So protection was the question.
Now, the, the, what I'm wanting to make sure that it's, it's, uh, operationally works, you know, you know, a couple more feet. So we'll just let it drop. Apparently everybody thinks it's fine. So I just want to make sure it's enough if we're going through, you're going through all this to do it.
I mean, I see a dumpster, the dumpster spot back there, and you're, you're going to be having a dumpster truck come in, and then I could back all the way up and go around that, the corner spot there to get back out of the parking area, right?
Yes.
And it would be, you know, so you're not, and are they doing that now? Was, you know, is that, is that...
Right now, I'm actually very familiar with the, uh, waste industry.
John, come on up, Mr. Alex, right up to the microphone.
I'm actually very familiar with the waste industry. I owned a company years ago, but right now, they, there's a front-load dumpster where they drive in and they dump it. There are many options you can have for a dumpster. You can put a, a rear-load dumpster on wheels, and the truck can pull in, they roll it out, and they, you know, they may charge a little extra fee for that service. But there's, as far as the truck needing to drive back in there...
It could be a smaller truck, is that what you're...
Could be a smaller dumpster that they roll out. Or oftentimes, the garbage men will come early in the morning. Part of their, their process is to come early, so there's no traffic, and they just zoom in and out and do it. So the garbage men will figure out, I think, how to take care of it.
And then the other thing is fire. Have you guys talked with the fire department in the office? Sorry?
They've been...
That'll come next.
Yeah. They've been in the loop a little bit. You know, like I said, when we get through our full-blown site plan reviews, part of our planning commission, site plan process, they'll be heavily involved.
I mean, I think you have a, a good idea. Don't get me wrong. I like the, the style of the building and everything, but I hate that you go through all this and, you know, that one little thing that must have happened.
Yeah. Well, yeah, I'm all for, you know, improving your lot, and I have no problem with the variances. I just want to make sure that it's workable, you know, it's a workable design. And it'd be great to clean it up. I'm all for it.
Is, is what's going on here really the, the unique physical circumstances, not the property itself, but it's the existing township requirements that we have, the twenty-five feet versus the, that, that's just where I'm having a little hard time with, with, with just meeting the legal requirements, because they, having a unique physical circumstances normally the...
Yeah, it's a combination of the existing cross-access being where it is, and that, you know, is the only location that really makes sense, at least on the south, to do any type of cross-access. So physically speaking, they have, they have to place their parking lot to meet up with this existing stub. When they do that, they're in violation, if they don't do that, they're in violation of our setback. So they have to push the building back in order to meet that. Well, then they are in violation of our setbacks. We have to get a variance or whatever for them to do that.
The other fact, it's, it's a point-five acre site.
Yeah, it's tight.
Drops, it...
It drops off about right here.
It, it starts dropping off, so...
You lose a quarter of the site off the back.
So I, I would say it's a combination of both the unique physical circumstances of the site, as well as what is going on north and south.
And in summary, we will get a site plan later?
Yes.
So this is a depiction, and, and what we're discussing is the variances of what...
You know, we've had other commercial variances come in the past, and planning commission has recommended that the zoning hearing board place extra site plan considerations on top of their variance approvals. That's certainly an opportunity that you have. I'm not saying that you should, or I have any recommendations, but that's an opportunity that is in front of you as well.
And other than the pushback from the property to the north, any negative comments from any of the property owners that you notified? Nothing was in the docket, so I assume...
Let me talk here.
Go ahead, talk.
I would tell you, one of the most difficult things to do is to get adjoining commercial property owners to cooperate with one another. Even though we've tried to establish cross-access easements on the property to the north, they've challenged those, and we've reviewed it with our solicitor, and they've concluded that we cannot force the connection north, but we can require the property to the south to connect, because they developed, I forget the dates, but the ordinances at the time McMurray Shops developed the property, the retail center to the south. We have our language that we have in our ordinances today that requires cross-access when adjoining commercial properties are developed. We're having a difficult time with cooperation from the property owner to the north, south, and behind. So, you know, this is step one through this variance process, but we have a long way to go to get through the site plan process as well. It's, this has been a challenging little half-acre piece of property on the Route Nineteenth corridor.
You would think of by looking at it, but...
How close are the elevations on the tie-in to the south? Is it pretty good?
Fair level.
Because that's a, that, I mean, that's a very big benefit to this site, is having that tie-in. You know, I think that's a...
The property to the south, does it have that, that, I call it a curb cut, or that, that look, or is that just drawn in for...
No, it's there. The, that paving is there.
To the north is...
It swings to the south.
To the south. It's there, ready to go.
Okay.
Both sides have it.
All right. I forgot to visit the site today.
Can I ask that if part of the, part of the, the reason for this is that to make it uniform with the name of a commercial site, is a reason why then we're not just pushing all the way back so that they will be streamlined? As if, is it the point there is by doing that, then, then what they're left with is a teeny, tiny little area to, to build? Because otherwise, you would think that part of them, the argument would be, let, push it back so that it's equal, and then it does look like one long line of, of commercial properties. And then we would have the parking on both sides versus on one end.
There's, there's two elements to that that I immediately, you know, the applicant's run into some stormwater issues, they're trying to minimize any amount of impervious area as possible. Even a couple feet back makes a significant difference on there. Secondly, I don't think that would necessarily, I think that would then push them out of the, the smallest variance possible to, to the development of the site, if we just said for aesthetic purposes, we want it back in line with the other two buildings. We're, I think, pushing ourselves too far at that point. So, you know...
Well, I think at that point, you'd be making the building that much smaller, and now you're, you're eliminating even more...
Yeah, I mean, they don't have much space to work with off the back, so I don't, that building can even go further back, so...
There are also some concerns of the, the road, the potential long-term erosion that it does, the risk it's adding, keep this building as, you know, as close to the district, but far away from that hill as possible.
In the past, has the zoning hearing board ever added language or a requirement that, where you have a situation where, you know, one variance is granted, right, or two variances are granted, but then, but then the property owner can't come back and say that by granting these two variances, you've created a different hardship. So now we need, we need a variance to the setback requirements in the back, because now we have, you see what I mean? Where one variance down the road, let's say you don't own the property, you know, or maybe you get the variance and then you sell it, or whatever, or, or, you know, whatever happens, and then that begets the need for another variance, because let's say, like you said, we push it back so far, but then the next person that owns it, you own, you want to put something in, and so then you're asking for a variance for the, for the back end of the property, or another variance. Like, we don't want one variance to cause the need for another future variance.
I would say that, my first reaction is, you know, there are some times we want to say, you know, you're not eligible, you can't seek a variance. We, we've always been told, you know, an applicant always has a right to try to come and get a variance. It's their job...
Sure.
...to meet the criteria for the variance. But I, I don't see that happening. I mean, we, we've looked at it here, and we think that these are the only two variances that they would need, and they can comply with all our other rules, parking, setbacks in the rear, side.
Cross-access.
We've kind of looked at that and tried to determine whether or not any other variances would be needed. Does that make sense?
Yeah, no, I understand. Yeah.
You don't need that, that little piece of green space there. See how that's a hard ninety-corner? I mean, in, at the time of building it, you'd be making that rounded, right, on the, right there, yeah.
Yes, that's mainly just to show the, the main concept.
Anybody else have questions or comments for the applicant engineer of the township? And we don't have any audience.
Looking at a recommendation.
It is, it is optional. They don't have to make the recommendation.
Well, we'd like it.
We prefer your support.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna make a motion.
Not necessarily required to.
I'm gonna make a motion to recommend that the zoning hearing board approve the two variances requested by the applicant, Joe and Alex pursuant to Seth's February fourth memo.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion that's seconded. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. All those opposed?
Aye.
Four of one?
Four of one.
Four of one. Thank you very much. Good luck.
Thanks.
Anything under planning portion separate?
I was gonna talk about potential...
Well, go ahead.
So...
I, I think Michelle was here when we talked about it.
We, Aaron, we talked to Aaron about this a little bit before the meeting. I think we touched on this last meeting. We have a potential special exception application coming across from the now-old Peters Township High School on East McMurray Road. There's a twenty-six acre parcel up there, some senior living plus townhouses. It's an ongoing project. And, you know, obviously with COVID going on, we have concerns about having a lot of people here. We initially, from the beginning, expected that to generate a lot of public interest, because we're doing some residential street connections and a new intersection on East McMurray. It's a big deal. We sent out a letter to eighty-two property owners. I got thirty-nine responses. Of those thirty-nine, of those thirty-nine responses, thirty-eight total people indicated an interest in attending both planning commission and zoning hearing boards. I would anticipate that to be even higher. I'm somewhat preparing for a fifty-ish people. In light of that, Ed and I decided we're going to do that special exception, we're going to planning commission and zoning hearing boards, similar to the Salas project, but those are going to be virtual for both of those.
Say that again? It'll be virtual for us?
Virtual, virtual for both planning commission and zoning hearing boards for the, for those agendas, when that's an item on the agenda. Our expectation is to have both of those in this room. You can use the cameras and the microphones and the speakers here to basically facilitate our Zoom meeting, as us, we sit here with participants online. They can, we can go back and forth with them. We could even have the applicant, the select members of the applicant's team here to answer questions as well.
Yeah, we, we would be here.
Yeah.
Planning commission staff, and maybe one or two of the applicant's team.
And we had, in January, we had, yeah, we had, we had a virtual, we had a Zoom meeting in January for the zoning, sorry, in December for the zoning hearing board. Worked well. It was an easier application. There wasn't nearly as much of a, a public experience on this. So, and I've got another one coming up Tuesday night, the Alex one, we're going to do it virtually as well. So it's been a little bit of trial run, but I want to let everybody know that that is potentially on the horizon. There's a couple hurdles that they need to come over, get over until we put them on an agenda, but just...
So you're able to project everybody up on the, when they're talking up on this screen?
Yeah, I mean, what I did for the zoning hearing board, I tried to focus everybody's attention on my presentation, not having a bunch of viewer gallery faces up there to distract people and myself. So I basically, it basically worked as a webinar, and I was presenting my presentation, and then we opened it up for questions and comments.
Did it, when the, when the questions came, were those, could you see faces or not?
They could choose to do that, but I kept it as a viewer, as a presentation.
Our, Ryan Vaughn and I are...
IT?
IT, not, not IT.
Video coordinators.
Yeah. He'll be here helping us. I don't know if he's, he's back there filming for tonight's meeting.
Say hi to Ryan.
I would like, if we do it, and applicants do come to the podium and speak, that we can see them.
Yeah.
You know, that would be good.
That would be good.
When is this?
We don't know yet.
Well, I know a lot of other municipalities are actively doing it, so it's definitely possible.
And the reason why we do a meeting like this live, there's no audio.
Right, right.
But we can't have, you know, even thirty people in here right now. It's just not...
You can social distance them.
I don't know if I want thirty people in here if COVID's over.
Right. If we, if we get fifty residents, we're almost to our maximum occupancy load anyway, so we're...
That, that potentially will be coming in a few months, we think.
Okay. I'm away in July, so...
Well, they're gonna make, they're gonna need to get over the hurdles that they need to get over before that, so I'm, I'm saying...
Maybe March, April?
April.
Oh, that, that's me.
Will we have that as its own separate meeting? Are you intending to have it as its own separate meeting, or is it going to be part of our regular meeting?
You know, I would think if, if we can have, you know, maybe two subdivisions like we had tonight, where we really don't need the applicant here, we could have those as part of it as well. But I think we would try to limit having any other type of application on there that we need to have in practice.
Keep it light.
Keep it light.
Light as we can.
Keep it light and last. Anything from the members?
So we may or may not be in here at that time, or we would...
I think we would be in here. It's just not set in stone that the meeting's actually happening.
What do you think about that? Wouldn't you like to be here as a group?
Yes, oh, yeah.
Yeah, I would rather be in here, yeah.
Plus the applicant and the attorney or engineer.
That just creates a better product of the resident as well.
I, I'd be anxious to see how it, well, we're gonna make it work. I mean, it's gonna be...
We'll make it work, yeah.
It'll be good.
Yeah, no, I think it would seem better if we were here and...
You can all look at it together.
Right.
Well, I think then that's just something that then for the applicant, you know, to really know and understand, to have their things ready to go, and set up in such a way that it can also be broadcast out, and that we don't... to have their things ready to go and set up in such a way that it can also be broadcast out, and that we don't then have members of the public who can't see. I think the members of the public have to be able to see everything that we can see.
You know, we wouldn't let them bring any posters or anything. It'd just be too difficult. Everything would be palatable.
Everything would have to be powerpoint, right. I mean, I guess, I mean, if they wouldn't have a poster so that we could see it a little more up close, but it would have to be an exact replica of whatever they're showing us that can be thrown up there so that the residents can see everything that we see.
We want to make sure that the public is being.
Yeah, I mean, that's, that's my biggest concern.
It's a public meeting.
We have an equitable opportunity to view it and respond to it.
Have you had any pushback on anything else that's been done virtually by audience members or?
No, no pushback.
Other boards are doing them virtually, and I think it's running smoothly. Seth's December's on here.
Yep, upcoming Tuesday night.
Well, the question is, has anything controversial? Has there been any issue with any of those? Right, that's, that's the difference.
Right. We've not had, yeah, something like this.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Needing adjournments?